To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm retaining motion-
I move we approve the agenda as printed, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Oh, and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, the same sign.
In a minute.
Motion to accrue to February fifth, in a minute.
Second that.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, the same sign, motion carries. Any general public concern? Looks like we're through that part in a hurry. Uh, we're gonna go right to the canvassers.
Motion to recess the board of supervisors and convene us board of canvassers.
Second that.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now on the canvas for the I S C C school election.
Fairly quick one, since you are the chairperson and there's four precincts, I'll hand them this way.
Oh, yeah, she's a sweetheart.
Yeah, we take the chairman night for our party.
Could go the other way.
(laughing).
It was the deal on cards, he goes.
Okay, inside your books you'll find, uh, let me know what precincts you are in, and it's just great yes and no's.
I have Gilmore City, Brad Yeats.
Okay, and you wanna go to the next one, it's like the second, this one in here.
I have-
One more.
One more?
Yep, where it says yes and no's.
Okay, we have nineteen yeses and twelve nos.
Okay.
I have precinct Humboldt.
Okay.
Hundred and three yeses, sixty-six no.
Okay.
Uh, Twin Rivers.
Alright.
And eleven yes, sixteen no.
Alright.
I have the absentee for Humboldt County. I have ninety-one yes, thirty no.
Okay, that means we have a total of yeses at two twenty-four, nos one twenty-four. We don't determine any winners because this is Iowa Central, it goes to Webster County. All we do is send them on abstract and tell them what our votes are and then determine the winners down there. Or the, and they already, it's unofficial right now, but it'll be official after-
Seventy-seven percent, something like that.
Yeah, they had very good turnout for this election.
So, do we need a motion on that, or just-
No.
No motion?
No, you can just-
I'll make a motion to adjourn his board of canvassers. Second that motion.
Motion, a second, any discussion? We're out of canvassers.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Yeah, aye.
I was, I was a little bit-
He's making things move today.
He's setting new records.
Alright, um, we got time for just some claims.
I looked over the claims, it looks like four hundred and thirty-six dollars, two hundred and forty-seven point seventy-seven. And for drainage, we had thirty-eight thousand, one twenty-four point seventy-seven. I moved approval there.
What was your four thirty-one?
Four thirty-six, two forty-seven, seventy-seven. That's what I got. Go ahead. I moved approval though.
Okay, second, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, the same sign, through the point. You wanna pass that book back down to-
You bet.
And sign it, and, uh-
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, what do you, or we have the board or the president's day next Monday.
We had earlier discussion about holding a meeting on Tuesday. So, the, uh, whatever day Tuesday is.
Yeah.
Twentieth?
And I believe there is drainage-
We had drainage scheduled for nine o'clock, so.
So, I guess we're having our meeting on Tuesday instead of Monday.
Yep.
Is that about the size of it?
I think so.
And we'll need a motion on that.
Make a motion that we, uh, have our next meeting Tuesday the twentieth.
We have a motion?
At eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty, normal time, same place, same time.
Tuesday?
I'll second Eric's motion.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of Tuesday say aye?
Aye.
So, the same sign.
I have to make sure we have Mr. Hopper remind you of that.
We'll tell him, he'll be here, he is here, we'll tell him. Yeah, that would not be good if he didn't show up.
If he come and he don't-
If that has happened.
Yeah, 'cause it's a little different, 'cause I know he does have other places he goes on Tuesday.
I don't think we got a huge amount, we got some, but it's probably better to have a, maybe we can have a short suite meeting.
But he was here when we discussed it the first time.
Alright, we have the name there for the eminent domain board.
Yes, uh-
Someone north found out for us.
Yes, uh, as I've related to Peggy, why this on the agenda? Billy Scott graciously, uh, agreed to serve on that board, owning property in several towns, and, uh, knowing it's not a full-time job, so he was more than agreeable to serve on that board. And I'd make the motion to appoint Billy on the eminent domain board as owner of city or town property.
We have a motion for Bill Scott.
I will second Eric's motion.
A second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the same sign, vote for Mr. Scott. Uh, we're ready to committee report.
You go left or right this time?
I'll go to you.
Shucks. Okay, February the-
I think these handles are delayed.
February the sixth, we had, um, housing meeting, Rick and I had a housing meeting from about till ten till noon, wasn't it, Rick?
Yep.
And what we've had is a builder talking to the city and the county about possibly building a group of houses. And no decision was made, there is a need for affordable housing in the community, and we just talked to them about either having a local builder build it, or they, if we can't get local builders to do it, they can line up somebody for us. But they're talking about single housing as well as condos or apartments, and it would be out here west towards the Gulf for us if they do it in town. Can you add to that, Rick?
Yeah, it was interesting discussion, 'cause they look at the demographics of Humboldt, uh, income levels, age, uh, things that Humboldt does have, what we don't have, our current housing, uh, prices of our current housing. Um, I was a little concerned, I think their costs were a little low for what we build around here for. Uh, they're telling us we could build these houses for this amount of money, and I don't know how in the world that could happen, but, um, and then I think the group's direction has changed a little bit from their, their original thoughts, so it's still working toward the end goal, which is more housing for Humboldt.
Well, the, my concern, not really concerned, but I'm curious, the water stops down right by us.
They, they have water already out there to this site.
Comes across from that town, or that-
Apartment house.
Complex, but the last I heard, they wanted, if someone built up there, they wanted to take that water and make the loop, so I'm just curious.
The city volunteered to pay that.
The city was gonna put the infrastructure in.
Wow.
Um, you know, so that's, if, but the, the, the deal is with the city wanting to do it, they need it built out in a hurry in order to recoup, in order to make it work, you can't drag it out over ten years, it's gotta be done fairly rapidly, the build-out does. And that's some of the concerns going ahead with this project, that if they can't get somebody to come in and build all these units, houses or condos or whatever, whatever they do, whatever time will work. Yeah, they need to build maybe like in a three phases and do it within-
What was the number again? How many were they thinking?
Uh, probably about, was it forty-eight total?
Could be total, and they go through all phases.
Whether for rental units, you know, townhouse, condos, single-family duplexes, they really don't know what they're looking for, for sure, but they figured-
Some might be.
That's about what would take to make the project work.
They talk about zero lot line for some, and if somebody wants to buy a lot and make a bigger lawn, they could. So, there's a lot of ifs and ands about it.
It's, it's a lot of, a lot of talking right now.
Do you have any other questions?
It could be starter homes for beginners, it could be retirement homes.
Yeah.
If it opens up some older homes for people, it's all kinds of just, just talk, what amounts to.
Yeah.
Okay, and then moving on, that night we had our conference board meeting upstairs, of which you all attended, and then on Friday, I was at ISAC board meeting down at Fort Dodge, down at Des Moines. Was particularly, we had nine of us show up and the rest of them on the conference call. I happened to be in Newton the night before, so I drove in, I got there an hour early, the highway was real clear. This lady called in.
Uh-huh, I played it safe.
We basically approved the budget, and we talked about Light Edge, which is a contracting company that does a lot of computer work, and we changed that to a different firm this year. Instead of doing so much in-house stuff, we're contracting some services for those people, and we don't have to pay hypers social security on it, so it's gonna count pretty good. Um, as far as our conference coming up next summer, or this August, NACO President Matt Chase will be there to give the presidential address in the main, and we may have some presidential candidates also. They've invited whoever's running for president to be there and talk. That's for the August conference. Uh, what else do we have? Approved the budget, first get out at two o'clock, we get out at one-thirty, so we moved right along.
We did.
That's basically what I did down there. Oh, the golf tournament was changed to July eleventh instead of, because of primary elections. That's why I was talking. Peggy gets to give the awards this year to the scholarship winners, and she's gonna have two or three speeches to give, so I'd suggest you go down and listen to her.
Usually I can look out and I can find you guys, usually, I need, I need somebody I can focus on, so I'm not for burdening, so I look for you guys.
Oh, you're an old pro now, Peggy, after being president.
Oh, no.
Lonnie-
Still get butterflies.
The Lonnie Pala, the chief of police from, uh, sheriff from Johnson County was telling me about, he came out of the gym one day, he's wearing his T-shirt and tennis shoes, and somebody was going down eighty, a hundred and twenty miles an hour. He made a arrest wearing his gym clothes.
Oh, my goodness.
He said the guy would lose his license and probably have to pay a terrible amount of insurance, but he couldn't put him in jail.
Uh-huh.
He stopped him because he was afraid he'd kill somebody.
Yeah.
Poor Jim.
So, he's really after this law that we talked about, and we had Jamie and, and Lucas gave us updates on legislation, and one of the things he's pushing is excessive speeding immediately lose a license.
Hmm.
If they involved in an accident.
That twenty-five over?
A twenty-five over, yeah.
Why would you need to go a hundred and twenty down?
Makes sense, you wouldn't.
If you go twenty-five over in any zone, you could lose your license if you cause an accident.
That's right.
Uh, Tuesday, I was at the accessors conference meeting. Uh, Wednesday, had the EMA meeting, the sixth and the seventh, that's all I had.
On, for me, Monday the fifth, uh, LAC board meeting, Monday morning. Uh, Tuesday, of course, the, uh, conference board, and we all, uh, went to that. On, uh, Wednesday, then the EMA meeting at the LAC, that was what I had this past week.
You're also sounding better.
Oh, yeah, I'm much better.
Better, on the man, you sound-
Let me know when I start looking better.
He yelled, he yelled.
That's what I'm working for, but that, I don't see that happening.
He yelled a lot at the ball game that night.
It just isn't it, it is, but that is not working for me, so I'm happy with the sounding better part.
Okay, Monday morning I had the LAC meeting. Uh, Tuesday, I had landfill down in Fort Dodge. Um, they were looking at having a rate hike in the landfill, but we needed a full board meeting for that, and we were short two, I think, two or three from getting the quorum. So, uh, we had our executive board meeting, and then we're having a full board meeting after that, and we were short people, so we had to just sit and visit for a while and go home.
We had a couple of your mayors upstairs.
Yeah, and there was a few that said they were coming and they never showed up, and, 'cause they, as you had, everybody signed up to have a full, full board, but, um, a couple, two or three didn't show up, and, and I don't know if it was 'cause of the snow, it snowed pretty good that night.
Yeah, it did.
And then, uh, let's see, Wednesday morning, I went over to Pocahontas for the Iowa Drainage District Association meeting over there, and there was nothing too pressing there, they talked about our turnout down in Fort Dodge, uh, went through the re, the review sheets that they hand out, you know, and, uh, they decided to have it next year in the same spot, same time. Everything went pretty well with that. Um, that was about it. Uh, the litigation thing is pretty well all done, all the bills are paid, um, so that's good, but it's still kinda lingering out there, there's still talk that they might try another route.
Other angle?
Another angle. So, hopefully, hopefully they won't, and that was the only other meeting I attended.
Alright, Tuesday night I was at the board conference board meeting upstairs, and Wednesday afternoon, five-thirty, I was at the EMA meeting down at, uh, LAC. Um, just FYI, Carl, um, the way they had the board meeting set up, they did the budget first, and I wasn't officially as a voting member until after that was done, so I had no voice in the meeting until the, so with you not being there, we really didn't have a, I got to voice our opinion, but couldn't vote, so I guess that wasn't a very enjoyable for me, but I guess that's what we got, so anyway, those were the meetings that I had.
I missed one in all my things.
Oh, okay.
I had, uh, that, uh, city hall on Tuesday morning from ten to twelve for the Humboldt County housing, also. A million things put in here and scratched out.
I know, it gets confused laughing, but it's kind of a rearranged-
We still arrange trumps, just like luggage.
Yeah. Uh, any other business from you there, Peggy?
No, I have to make it up.
Well, I have a couple of, uh, things that I wanna talk about. Um, Peggy and I the other morning in, uh, the snow, with her calling, wondering about, and I'm just looking for some advice, because she sent me a message at six-ten, okay? Um, and I didn't really have a, you know, when you sit down here and you get to be the one, be the bad guy to shut the courthouse down, well, at six in the morning, I, we don't have a crystal ball to decide how, what it's gonna do in an hour or two hours when they, but I think our bigger dilemma is, is I don't know what's going on out here, I really didn't know when secondary roads started cleaning roads, so, you know, I think maybe we need to visit with Ben. I don't care if they'd even text us the night before and say, hey, if the roads are bad, um, or the snow is deep tomorrow, we're gonna start at five, we're gonna start at four, we're gonna start whenever.
Right.
So that I, because when she calls at six-ten and says I need to know by six-forty-fiveish so I can let everybody know, we're kind of in a rock and hard place between how are they doing out there, or, you know, I'm, I'm just looking out the window and I see traffic going by on Highway Three, so I make my assumption that, you know, um, hopefully things are moving wrong in the country, and I guess, I think that it'd be a lot easier if someone would just let us know that, uh, the roads are getting better, um, we're fifty percent done, we're seventy-five percent, however it is. I mean, do you have any ideas, Rick, what you did?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, a call to Ben would be good, 'cause they got the people out checking the roads, letting you know what the conditions are like, and like you say, you don't have a crystal ball, you don't know what the weather's gonna do. Uh, my opinion, I, I use it worse than snow always. Um, courthouse, people expect it to be open though, 'cause they know they got deadlines, they gotta meet, and, you know.
I think, my opinion is, most of the people that work at the courthouse are probably within a mile, and that can be different than what is at Livermore and Pioneer and so forth.
Yeah.
I think Peggy's pretty good judge of that, really. She knows whether our employees can get here or not, irregardless of where the country roads are open. My opinion.
Well, and that's, and I, I don't wanna be the one that says if we're gonna be open and someone's in an accident, you know, and I'm not, because I'm the dummy that jumps in the semi and takes off leaving town, and my wife says, you, you lost your mind, but I guess I'm just, you know, we don't know from, 'cause on Monday or Tuesday, whenever it snowed, when I left town, the plows were just coming out at seven-thirty, so that's the dilemma, I don't know whether, you know, we don't know what time the dogs is, we don't get any update.
Yeah, I think a call to Ben would help you out that way. Um, see, Monday it started snowing when we were in our LAC meeting, 'cause I went in, it was nice, when I come out, the ground was white.
Yes, it did.
So, that happened between seven-thirty and eight.
Yep. Yep.
I know other days they do go out at five.
Right.
You know, if it snows for the night, as soon as it quits snowing, I think if, you know, if it's snowing real hard at five in the morning, they're not gonna go out at five.
Right.
They'll probably wait till the snow's done and then plow it.
And, but that's part of, and you're talking about the courthouse possibly being closed, which, that's always the million dollar question, no crystal ball deal, people going to work other places, I think the idea of, you know, if it's an outright blizzard, yeah, they're not gonna go out, but if, the quicker they can get out, and I've always stressed that, and I think they're doing a better job in the secondary roads and the cleaning, go out at four, see what the conditions are, and that is kind of what the discussion gives you an idea of what's it doing out there. I mean, is it letting up, is it, are you getting the roads cleaned off, or, I mean, or is it getting to the point where it's just so bad that then by six-thirty, you have a better handle on, you know, this probably is a, a dangerous situation.
Well, I just don't wanna keep her in-
Yeah, I think I'd make a call to-
On a fence.
To the secondary roads department and, um, get their opinion of the conditions out in the country.
So, then they're letting Ben know?
Yeah.
'Cause that's what I don't know.
Ben, Ben, he would know by that time of day.
Right, well, then I'll just give Ben a call and-
Well, and not to give you more grief, I appreciate that you call the sheriff too, because-
Yeah, yeah.
We're not so much worried about getting someone here, 'cause someone can always get here and open a door if we have to.
Right.
But it's, people come out in that weather.
They do.
They expect to get their licenses, they expect to go to the recorder's office and record something, we don't want them falling and getting hurt, 'cause then we're liable.
Right.
Or have something, you know, sometimes you can't always, that day that it snowed all day, Dave tried to keep the steps cleared off.
Yeah, you can't keep them clean.
Yeah, it's tough.
And you can't, but they gotta walk from the car up to the courthouse, and it's slippery, and so we do the best we can, and, uh, Marshall has done an excellent job with keeping the parking lot cleared out, but if I don't let them know by seven o'clock, they're trying to get ready, you know, do I get ready and go in, do I stay home?
Yeah.
That type of thing, they've gotta have some decision there, that's why we have to be so early with it. We can't leave it till seven-thirty, 'cause some people drive from quite a ways to come into work, and you don't wanna put them on the spot at the last minute driving in, so.
Well, I did, I talked with Dean and I, uh, got, he was on his way into town, and he said the roads were, at that time, they were pretty good, but then I called the LAC, and he had one in the ditch on C forty-nine, 'cause it only had one pass east, and-
Right.
The westbound lane was still, hadn't been plowed, so.
It can vary a lot from Humboldt County line south to the Humboldt line north too.
Yeah.
West to east, for example, Algonia had very little snow, Western County had, what, eleven, twelve inches.
Well, that's another resource, you know, you've got some deputy sheriff out as far as what are the conditions, and that's, still not a crystal ball, but it's immediate around the six o'clock timeframe.
And honestly, Bruce, that's the worst part about being chairman.
I know, and that's the decision that you make is, and when I, I told Peggy, I'm, I'm trying, dear, I'm-
Well, I think you're on the right track.
Yep.
It only happens a couple times in your term.
Use your resources of the folks that are out there, you know, the sheriff's department, secondary roads.
You'll be right after fifty percent of the time, don't worry about it.
It helps you all, Bruce, in my thirty-some years I've been here, we probably closed half a dozen times.
Yeah, it's unreal.
So, no, yeah, not very often.
What are your thoughts in the piles out there, do we need to have them moved?
We need to move them, I can't see to go, when I go out this way-
I'm gonna have to move it, yeah.
Yeah, you can't see the traffic coming.
Gonna move.
Somebody's gonna get there.
I don't want something-
Yeah, I was in Fort Dodge yesterday, and, uh, not at the courthouse, of course, but similar situation where the, they had piled snow, and it was, it was very, uh, dangerous situation, getting out of the parking lot into the street, you couldn't see.
You guys won the record down there, you got a lot of-
There's a lot of snow.
Yeah, let's get those moved this week.
Any, any salvation, I heard a chatter on the radio down in Newton this weekend, somebody was accusing us of plows and not even going out, because it was snowing as loud, you get the roads cleared in time, they got them all cleared, it snowed that much again, so people calling in and saying, how come the snowplows weren't out? So, every day's different.
Yeah.
The other thing I was gonna bring up was, Rick and I talked yesterday at church on the, the insurance meeting on Thursday and Friday, and I just am throwing that out there, um, that Rick, last year, I don't know if it was graciously volunteered, uh, when we were down there, that he went, has went to that meeting, so, um, he understands it probably as well as all, all of us, so he stayed, gonna stay with that. And my concern was, is him and I are up for reelection next year, and with Carl, um, walking at the end of the year, then I guess I just threw that out for Dave, if he was interested in going, 'cause I didn't wanna overstep my bounds when Rick is gonna be the voter, so I'm just letting, if you wanna go to your, that insurance meeting, I don't wanna keep you.
Don't matter to me, if, like I said, I think somebody out of the, Peggy's office needs to be there and one supervisor-
Chris was there last year.
Chris, of course, Peggy, you go too, don't you?
Yeah.
But if you got a couple of us down there, unless I spend the money to send another person down for a night's lodging and mileage and stuff, so, but if you want me to go down-
Oh, I'm, I'm just, I just, all I really didn't want next year, something comes up that you're, and we can't twist his arm to stay on the board, uh-
Well, hopefully I still am, but-
And once always, ninety-two are, and one's gonna twist your arm, and thank you for staying on the insurance for the continuity of, of-
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing it, 'cause it took me two years just to figure it out.
I know.
So, then this year I'll be better when I walk out of there, as opposed to someone hitting me in the head?
I think you would, yeah.
I think that's a fair thought process, but I agree probably with Dave, I mean, we've got someone for the auditor's office is going, Rick is going, I have faith that, uh, you'll run a fine campaign this year and you'll be here next year.
Yeah, hopefully.
And thank you for, like I said, the continuity of staying with that.
And if, and if, Bruce, you feel like you don't need to go, I'm, if we have Peggy and Chris down there and I'm down there, I'd-
I'm not saying I don't need to go, I'm just saying I didn't want Dave next year to walk-
And blind.
You say, I, I've had enough, I didn't want him to walk into it and all of a sudden he's in the, the U.
Yeah.
And the voting person, so I guess I just wanted him to have the opportunity to go sit and listen and watch, so.
They do have good cookies.
Oh, now you got it.
Explain it.
Now you got it.
For the cookies.
So, anyway, uh, if we can decide that, I guess if you wanna change your mind, let me know.
While we're talking about possible meetings, I think I sent you guys an email, and you're very welcome to go on the twenty-third of February. This Jerry Fox Holden, that talked to us about mental health the other day, state director, he's gonna be meeting with our region on the twenty-third at Fertile Iowa, or any heck that is.
That's based on what I see.
Yep.
Ten o'clock in the morning, all board members are welcome to come, and they'll chew out what's going on.
Should get that email.
Okay, you know about it then.
Have you read it?
Gotcha.
Okay, well, we're like thirty seconds to our bid time, so-
Alright, so we get moved into drainings?
Turn the supervisors go into drainings. Of a motion?
Yep.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Point of the vote, same sign, we're now in drainings.
I will get Trish's work.
You're nice work, Chairman, it's not even nine o'clock yet.
You're making me look really bad.
When you have, when you have, yeah, forty-five, talk to you about. Turn the board canvassers.
Oh, we gotta pick on somebody.
You know, the, I just, I didn't figure that, that vote would been-
That high.
Hot.
Me too, I was, I was surprised.
I mean, we talked, we, we linked about the amount of, you know, uh-
Bruce ran that Bruce screw today.
Did that many people?
They did, there's a lot.
Don't bring chairs in.
Harley, did you bring all these people?
Got them.
Pull that, pull that one down.
You can come around.
Bring one more.
You will, right?
We got chairs, we have recycling.
Yeah, I'll take all the mine with safety.
Thank you, I'll hear you.
Where have you wanted it? We dwelt the dogs Friday night, so it's up on-
Got three more over here.
Yeah, man, puppies.
Not used to it.
Two, two was too bad. Yeah, it was, well, it, yeah, from Thursday on, it was, actually, the week was a mess, yeah, the whole week was a mess.
Got room for Rick too.
Yeah, I hope so.
Can you be here the twentieth?
Well, I think, on Tuesday, we'd move your board meeting from nineteen to the twentieth, something to do.
It's better.
We got drainage, it's better.
Yeah, it's easier, that's why people have kids with it.
That's right.
Cause they're up all the time, and I get me over like me, I-
Well, you did the police, you knew you were here.
I wouldn't.
I think that's right.
I think it might shorten your-
To the twentieth.
Thirty-five, France City, no, that's-
DD six.
DD six.
Please, here you go.
They need a bigger roof.
Big calendar.
But they already have the road walked off, so...
It's a little weak.
My...
Pretty bad deal.
I do.
Are you ratchet up for singing?
On snow last season?
No.
Here, he's got them over here.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it's one.
This is the, this hat...
It's not bad, it's just from the sound of it.
The coat and this is the sheet, you want that also? Write them down.
Did you, did you get a key or do you need one?
I got one.
You don't, we're keeping you.
Did you get everybody's one of their shoes?
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Rick, you're an old face here, so I was brought to the...
Oh, sorry. I should have known better.
Well, we're glad you're here to do this, Rick.
Appreciate all of you coming.
Yes, we do.
I guess I'm willing to turn the floor over to you there.
Okay. This, we've got nine o'clock set for the bid opening for, um, DD two here, Branch C?
DD thirty-five.
Or, BD thirty-five, Branch C.
Thirty-five.
Yes.
With them, you're on meeting.
Yeah, I didn't want to hear that word again. Yeah, I get it. So, um, I gave the board a copy that has my estimates on it, um, and then we, what I'll be doing is I'll be opening the, the bids here first, and then I'll open the bids, and then I'll read.
It's Monday.
Well, yeah, she probably don't get it, though. Only you have, and it's been here like this for a while.
For a while, yeah.
Get them in the vault.
We've got seven bidders that have turned in bids, um, we'll just, uh, start giving you the totals for each of the options that are bid, so, okay.
And all these are your estimate, estimated cost on the various options?
Yes, correct. Yep. The first one I'm going to open will be from Reutzel Excavating, that's R-E-U-T-Z-E-L. Like I say, open and check for a bid bond first. Option one, total bid, eight hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars. Eight nine five, six nine four. Option two, six hundred eighty-one thousand, ninety-five dollars. Six eight one, zero nine five. No bid for option three or option four. Option five, total bid, nine hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars. Nine one seven, nine five two. Option six, total bid, six hundred eighty-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars. Six eight eight, zero three five. The next one will be...
Excuse me, sorry.
We've incorporated, uh, Dallas. I'm just always glad that someone else other than me...
Sorry.
Not a problem. Maybe you see if I'm a shut-off. The bid bond's been provided by Union. Option one bid, one million, forty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. One, zero four eight, three eight eight, point three oh. Option two, total, eight hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Eight four eight, two six nine, point one five. No bids, no bid on the three through six. Next one will be from King Construction of Wall Lake. Option one, total bid, seven hundred twenty-one thousand, seventy dollars and ten cents. Seven two one, zero seven zero, point one zero. Option two, total, five hundred forty-eight thousand, seventy-four dollars and ten cents. Five four eight, zero seven four, point one oh. Option three, total bid, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars and eighty-five cents. Six nine seven, five zero zero, point eight five. Option four, total bid, five hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars and ten cents. Five nine seven, one one six, point one oh. No bid on options five and six. Next one is from Rachel. Let's see what the rest of the company out raised. Rachel, contract.
Good R A.
What's that?
Just regular rate, R A C H E U.
R A C H E L, contracting, out of Mitchell, Minnesota. The bond has been provided.
They're moving down towards the equator, coming all the way down here.
There you go. So the bid, option one, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars. Eight eight seven, one eight seven. Option two, seven hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. Seven four three, two nine five. Option three, total, nine hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars. Nine five three, six two three. Option four, eight hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars. Eight six four, five eighty-one. Option five, one million, seventeen thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars. One, zero one seven, five five four. Option six, total bid, nine hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars. Nine two four, one five four. Next one will be from Holland Contracting, of the Forest City. Option one, total, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and ten cents. Seven two seven, nine, five nine one, point one zero. Option two, total bid, five hundred seventy thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty cents. Five seven zero, six three six, point six zero. No bid on three, four, five or six. Next one will be from Denver Underground. Total bid for option one, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, sixty-three dollars. Seven five seven, zero six three. Option two, total bid, six hundred three thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars. Six oh three, five five four. No bid on three through six. Last but not least, is this the seventh one?
Mm-hmm.
This is from Nels Pedersen Company. Total bid on option one, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars. Seven eight one, three eight nine. Total on option two, six hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars. Six three seven, eight two zero. Total bid on option five, eight hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars. Eight thirty-one, four thirty-eight. Total on option six, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty dollars. Seven two eight, nine four zero. Trish and I will take these, or I can take them and, uh, check the math on these, and we'll come back with you. This was your last item, was it? Or even another things?
Yep. That's all on drainage, for right now.
Okay, okay. We'll, we'll get this checked here hopefully in the next few minutes, so...
Want to play a Jeopardy theme song, or are we just going to sit here for a while, or what do you want to do?
Take a short recess.
Short recess.
Yeah, give her some time to go through things.
Thank you.
Enter fifteen.
So we don't rush ya?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure they're all...
Yep, and we will get a bid tab, like I said, later today, I have a meeting with Commissioner.